Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for the gifted and committed people that who's that serve our city, the council members, the mayor, administrators and staff. And Lord, thank you for the privilege of living in a place like Fergus Falls and for the positive things that we can see happening around us. Or to think about your word that talks about Jesus looking at the crowds and having compassion on them. And I would pray that all those who serve and work in our city would see how decisions they make, actions they take will affect people. Give our city people wisdom to understand and present the ramifications of what they do and how they do things. Give them grace to work together and help them to seek what is good and right and true. Thank you for this place and time and each one that's here, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30, February 5th, 2024, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Yep.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Yeah, good evening, Your Honor, council members. I am not aware of any changes to the agenda this evening, so unless anybody has any thing to discuss on the consent agenda, we can approve the agenda as presented.
I want to pull a couple of things off the consent agenda.
There you go.
Number one and number six.
Andrew?
Number one and number-
I just have a couple of things on the minutes.
Pardon?
Just a couple of things on the minutes.
So, number one?
Number one. Yeah, number one.
Good.
With that, we can approve the agenda with those two items removed for the consent. Thank you.
Hold on for that.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Tom. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening. There are no bids to award. We have three items under petitions and communications, and then we'll have the open forum. First item is a resolution acknowledging the retirement in 29 years of service from Bob Wallington. And I do not believe Bob is with us this evening. Whereas Bob Wallington has submitted his intent to retire effective February 16th, 2024, and whereas Bob was hired on December 11th, 1995, as a custodian, and whereas on July 1st, 2000, he moved to the building and maintenance position at City Hall, and on March 31st, 2008, his position changed to building maintenance supervisor purchasing. And whereas Bob's knowledge experience with a variety of HVAC systems was very valuable and will be missed, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept the resignation of Bob Wallington and thank him for his 29 years of dedicated service as an employee to the City of Fergus Falls. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a city council meeting by Councilmember Jim Fish, who moved his adoption, was seconded by Councilmember Scott Kwame, and was adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. We also have a proclamation declaring February 8th, 2024, as Giving Hearts Day. We have some people in the audience with us today who have participated in that event for many years, so we thank them for that. Whereas Giving Hearts Day was started in 2008 by Dakota Medical Foundation and Impact Foundation as the first 24-hour regional event of its kind, with Alex Stern Family Foundation joining them as co-hosts in 2014. And whereas Giving Hearts Day is a gateway for citizens to connect to charitable organizations doing important work, improving health and quality of life across our state and community. And whereas Giving Hearts Day 2024 includes over 560 nonprofit organizations and charitable funds, spans the entire state of North Dakota and Northwest Minnesota, and includes nine nonprofit organizations in our own city of Fergus Falls, which are Inspiration Point Christian Camp and Retreat Center, Fergus Falls YMCA, Health Resources Center, Lutheran Brethren Seminary, A Wife Like Me, Ottercove's Children's Museum, Freedom Resource Center, Hillcrest Lutheran Academy, and Lake Region Healthcare Foundation. And whereas the city, I'm sorry, whereas Fergus Falls Giving Hearts 2024 Collaborative Goal is to work together to strengthen, equip, and enhance quality of life while providing resources and services to the community of Fergus Falls. And now therefore I, Ben Shire, as the Mayor of the City of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim February 8th, 2024, as Giving Hearts Day in the City of Fergus Falls. Thank you. Item number three is a review of the 2023 investment portfolio, and we have Mike Heschin is here with us. And are you going to introduce him, Bill, or should I?
Go ahead and introduce.
Here's Mike Heschin, everyone. There it is.
Thank you. It's good to be here with you.
Welcome.
This year for this report, it was a good year. Last year, there were losses, if you remember that, and I was not here in person. Is that a coincidence?
We remember that technology did not cooperate.
Technology did not cooperate.
So, what happened? If you remember, two years ago, interest rates were really low. You're in the bank, what do you get on your money? Not even 1%. So, interest rates went up. The value of your securities went down. But the good news is, there was nothing wrong with the securities. The value recovered. And even better news, we're actually earning money on your reserve funds now. You're earning a rate of 4.6%, where the yield on your same bonds, two years ago, was 1.1%. So, now we're earning some more money. You have some pages in front of you. I'll go through these rather quickly. This is page two, is a year-by-year gains and losses on your investments. This is what I was talking about. We've had, we had some good years, 2018 through 2020. When interest rates went up, there were some unrealized losses and recovery in 2023. In dollars, that annual yield that we are getting now is about $1.3 million per year. Page three shows the total reserve, the value of the total reserve fund going over time. This has been invested for a long time, for many years, with the manager that is currently running the portfolio, Galliard Investment Management. They have been doing a good job through this period. We've been managing the portfolio for more than 10 years, and over all the periods on the page you're looking at here on page four, they've been a little bit better than the index after fees. And they have to invest in very high-quality bonds from following state statutes. So, it's a very conservative portfolio, but even after they're very low fee, they're adding nice value. Lastly, everything passes the investment policy that we monitor according to the standards of that.
Thank you, Mike. We'll open up the questions from the council.
And then I'm going to do a review of just why we hold the funds we do. I'll go through a brief, but-
Sounds good. If no one has any questions, Mr. Heschin, thank you very much, and we'll welcome Finance Director Bill Somer to give an overview of funds and why they're held.
Thank you, Your Honor and council. Up on the screen, we put together, and we've been doing this the last number of years, of showing the allocation of all our cash and investments of the city broke down by fund, so you get kind of an idea of why do we hold certain funds that we do. The first one up here, the general fund, that is our general operating fund of the city. We say that when we talk about the budget and when we talk about the audited financial statements. But here, from the investment standpoint, so we have $9.7 million there at the end of the year. Certainly one of our larger budgets, again, all of our general operations happen in that fund, so a $15.4 million annual operating budget. We get our local government aid at the end of the year. Our tax levy comes in at the end of the year. So, you would expect the balances to be higher as well, because now you're going to run on that for the first six months of 2024. In addition, it's a little bit higher this year because we received our public safety aid of about $614,000, used specifically for the police and fire departments. And then the housing, Clara, help me with the term, that housing aid, little over affordable housing aid that's new this year, came in right at the end of the year, is for another $100,000. So, that's some of, a little bit of a bump over the prior year. The next section is special revenue funds. That's the fund type. And these are funds that have a dedicated revenue source. So, we separate these. Each fund is run like its own business, keeping the, keeping the funds separate. So, larger ones in there, we have the Port Authority. $1,016,000 in that fund. A lot of those funds are for the CBHH, the Community Behavioral Health Hospital. The Port Authority owns that, operates it for the state of Minnesota. All of the expenses are covered by the state of Minnesota. So, within that fund, there's $643,000 just for future capital of state dollars that we are holding, as well as they pay in operations each month as well. So, 100% funded by the state. We also have some balance on a dairy loan that is being held there until that is all closed out. The rest of it, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars for operations of the CBHH and operations of the port. We have some ARPA funds left, but the bulk of that will go across the river here to the downtown page two. Public library at $583,000, noting, you know, we have an annual budget of over a million. So, again, keeping the cash balances in relation to an annual budget. ICE Arena, some capital funds there. You'll see various tax abatement and TIF plans. Those are restricted. You can only spend those on the TIF districts or those tax abatement districts. So, they're restricted funds. We have our various revolving loans at the bottom there. Again, restricted for use for business loans. That's our economic development loan program and those various programs. Lynn, if you want to page down one? Thank you. The 300 series is debt service. That's where we pay our bonds. Again, restricted funds. You can't pull those for other things. They're used to make our bond payments. Also, several, you'll see in the 400 series, our capital projects. We hold funds there in the various PIR projects, permanent improvement revolving funds. Those, again, are for those specific bond funds as well. We make transfers up to the bonds to make the bond payments. You'll see a large negative balance in Fund 403 of $3.8 million. That's our capital projects where we have up fronted the project costs, and then we have state funding that comes in, federal funding for various road projects. I made a few notes here, bear with me. Yeah, of course, some of the projects coming this summer, the DeLagoon Project, the Aquatic Center, we have expenses that are already out of that cash balance, and we'll be bonding for those in the spring and paying for that with the sales tax revenue. Some dairy project there again, and the RTC project finalizing there. We're waiting on some state reimbursements. So, again, a lot of receivables on some of those, as well as future bonding. This airport also there, we have project reimbursements coming in from the FAA for that as well. The 600 series are the enterprise funds. No tax dollars go into those funds. Those are used to operate those businesses based on the user charges, and we hold these funds for operations and also capital replacements for the infrastructure. And we'll come back and talk more about those as we bring back utility rate analysis to you too in the coming month or so. 704 is our equipment fund. That's our fleet of equipment, used again for replacing the equipment and operating. And down one more slide, Lynn, and then I will be done. Thank you. On this page, a number of trust funds where people have donated to the city, to the library, so they're donor restricted funds. Some of the larger ones, you can see Fund 878 Landfill Escrow Agency for about $2.8 million. That is funds we hold for the old landfill to do post-closure care costs and monitoring. We, that's restricted again, and we don't spend that until we get the state authority to do so. Each year, we submit our expenses to the state. They tell us, yes, you can use that, and I move that over to the refuse fund. And then we're fiscal hosts for those organizations, Peg Access. Business Development Fergus Falls has two of those. That's our, you know, local business people that make recommendations to you as a city council for making loans. And then the CVB there as well, funded with the lodging tax. So, wanted to just give you that update of, you can see, a lot of the funds are all segregated out and restricted for various purposes, where we don't, we can't just move them one to the other, so. Any questions on that? Both of these are just an update for you tonight, so no action.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Bill? For Mike? Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on. At this point, we will open the meeting for the open forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the council regarding any matter that's not on the agenda, please feel free to step to the lectern at this time, state your name.
Bob Noah, Fergus Falls. I had a question about decorum. Two weeks ago, I sat and listened to the conversation about the veterans, the new veterans spot and the parking. And there was a conversation going on with Councilman Kramer, who is my representative for my ward. Mr. Mayor, it was in the paper too, that you had said that he was speaking out of both sides of his mouth. When you talk about decorum and ethics, it applies to everybody. I thought I was totally out of line. I didn't have an opportunity to say anything when I was here listening to that. But if we're not going to have town hall meetings and regular open forums and just little opportunities to speak in front of the council and our city, then at least we expect that our representatives are going to have an opportunity to talk about the things that are important to us, like safety, safety of veterans and parking. He wasn't out of line at all. And when Councilman Rachel started in, he chided both of them, oh, we're not going to have a back and forth. What are we here for? For the last year, I've been talking about having an open dialogue and open channels for the city, for the public. And there's been no movement on that, other than that good open forum last year. So, it's very discouraging to see that there's not a same standard for everybody. I think you owe Mr. Kramer an apology, and he's representing us. You owe us an apology, and I think that's real leadership. So, I'm encouraging all of you to revisit the idea of having more regular open forums so that you can actually know what we're thinking, know what we care about, and at the very least, if we can't expect you to talk about these simple things, then how do we come to you about things about corruption in government, nepotism, double standards, different things that occur within all governments? So, we'd like you to take a look in the mirror on these things.
Just to remind you, you do have the floor. It is an open forum. If you have any, if there's any corruption or nepotism or anything else, you have the floor. This is an open forum. We've instituted the open forum. You have the ability to address your council in an open forum, which is, I'm glad you're taking advantage of that today, Bob. So, but I just want to make it clear to the public, anyone else is also, will, you know, able to step up and address the council, so.
Well, very well said, Mayor. If I could spend probably two hours talking about the different issues that I've spotted. Last year, my focus was on the, the Human Rights Commission, which I believe is more of a political action committee. It's very skewed. I could talk a long time about that. That's just one of the things going on in this city that are kind of a hidden, open secret. And amongst all of you, you keep quiet about things. You're worried about your position, your jobs, and your futures. There's a lot of questions about what's going on with this council, how you're acting towards one another and the public, and what's going on behind closed doors. So, I'm not smart enough to come up with all the details, but it's going on, and you guys are responsible. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Feel free to do so at this time.
Dwayne Cookman on Stanton Avenue. I haven't heard an update, you know, about the Glacier Trail. You know, I've pinged you, Mayor, and Andrew, you know, and getting back, but it seems like they're getting slow and getting back to you. I think the other one was that we're going to, going to be voting on in March, when there was supposed to be some updates, and I think it's about the franchise fee. Is there any updates on that? So, I thought like every month that we were going to hear an update, because I think there's marching steps towards that vote for the franchise fees of power lines or Otter Tail Power, Light Legion Electric.
I don't know the exact times, but I do, we will guarantee that both of those issues are coming back.
That was just questions about those updates.
You bet. They'll both be coming back to the council for either discussion and/or action.
All right. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Dwayne. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. There are nine items remaining. If anyone would like to remove any of the addition, any additional items, we can do that at this time. If not, we can pass the remaining nine items through a resolution.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number one is a motion approving the minutes from the January 16th, 2024 City Council meeting and the January 31st, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Anthony, did you have a question?
Yeah, as much as anything, I appreciate, obviously, it's in, in place now, but my concern is I would like the contract to come back for review because, you know, obviously to build this parking lot is going to cost Wayne Enterprises a lot of money. And, you know, I want to make sure that, that he understands and it's clear in the contract that we can revoke that and bring it back to being city property, and that if he puts, you know, $50,000 into this parking lot, that, you know, the city can obviously bring it back before he goes and puts $50,000 into it. He's building on the city right of way. It's not a permanent easement, and I just want to make sure that Wayne Enterprises are very comfortable with, with that fact, that whatever he invests in that piece of land to make this parking lot, that, you know, the city can say, we're developing the riverfront, and we're going to push through, and we now want this parking lot back again. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that that's, that's the crux of everything, yeah.
The encro, you're referencing the encroachment discussion?
Yeah, the encroachment, yeah, that we can claim it back again regardless of what he does to it and what he spends on it. And, and I would also like to make sure that whatever plans and construction he does, it meets all of our city codes and that is built in, you know, in the standards that we require, as opposed to it being, you know, just somebody building a parking lot. So.
If I may, I'd like to add to that.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity in the last couple of weeks to kind of follow through with a couple of things regarding federal building codes. I happen to have quite a few of those right here. I just took a few notes regarding hospital outpatient-type clinics regarding parking, and just there's some of the notes that I gleaned off of that. 10% of total parking must be handicapped accessible. One in six handicap spaces must be a van accessible. For every 25 spaces, one must be van accessible. Size of parking space would be 96 inches wide, with an access aisle 50 inches, front or rear. But here's the key point, and this is where, where that location would be, on the east side of the Sunmart Building. There's quite a slope to the road, and that was back even to in this, on the 16th. It was noted in the minutes that I had an issue with slope, question about slope for these veterans getting out of their vehicles. And it says here that no parking area can have no more than 2.08% slope. Now, if that's on the east side of the building, in order to get it at 2.08% slope, we're going to have to come down, or Wayne Industries will have to come down probably below the footings of the building to get that slope. If not, then the city has to build the road up to get that to 2.0% or 2.08% slope. I don't know how that could be done. We, we don't have the money to, to rebuild the road if that's the case. These are just a few things that, that I had researched and looked at, and just kind of falls in line with what Anthony had said. So, thank you for letting me speak.
So, yeah, thanks. The item on the table is the approval of the minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm not done. I have a couple of other things on the minutes.
Oh.
Sorry.
If they're related to the minutes, but-
Yep, it is related to the minutes. On the open forum last time, on the 16th, Mr. Layton, it was acknowledged in the minutes, presented an analysis of what he believes Fergus Falls spent in 2023. With that information, that did come from the State of Minnesota Auditor's Office, those numbers did, so just to clarify that. And then also too, on the page two of the minutes, where it talks about me, as the quote, which Bob kind of mentioned earlier in the open forum, as far as talking out of both sides of one's mouth. It said, he felt council members, with you, Mayor Ben, talking out of both sides of their mouth. I think it was my mouth is what she referred to, because that was said after I had spoke. So, I think that comment was directed at me and not Anthony or Laura, because those were the other two that voted no on that. So, I just want to make it clear that if that is true, Mayor Ben, that it was directed towards me. I think the minutes should reflect that. Thank you. That's all I have.
You have some amendments to the minutes. Would anyone, anyone else have any amendments to the minutes? Councilman Rupert?
Can I respond to that last point? I, I don't-
Just have the minutes of our approvals. Feel free to, if you want.
Yeah, I, the impression that I got, I didn't go back and re-watch it or anything, but I believe it was just a general comment that was made. I don't believe it was addressed to any one person in particular, so I don't, yeah, I don't agree with that, but, yeah, let's just, let's- yeah, let's just, let's keep moving on. Let's get something done.
Someone like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from January sixteenth, City Council meeting, and January thirty-first Committee of the Whole Meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Is the motion to approve the minutes as presented this evening, or to incorporate the things that were just mentioned?
Uh, I would move to approve as presented.
Is that your, is your second name as presented?
No, I think we should put, what Kramer wants to put in there, it was directed to him. He felt it was directed to him. I think it'd be fine. I think that's, that's okay.
It was after my comment.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it should be then, so.
You all right with that?
Yeah, I guess I failed to see the significance, but, okay.
It does when you have your name on it. Thank you.
Your Honor, if I may.
Yeah, please.
Um, I wanna be clear that we're doing what the council is directing us to do. Um, so that, there was multiple things that Councilman Kramer mentioned, and we just touched on one. But are we also gonna amend the languages pertaining to the open forum? Or, I mean, this is getting a little bit convoluted.
Right.
I, I guess I had two things.
Very clear motion.
I, I had two separate, um, comments. One was the open forum. I'd like that to reflect that those, uh, numbers came from the State of Minnesota Auditor's Office, if that's what was. Go ahead and finish. That would be one. And then the other one would just be acknowledging that, uh, that was directed at me instead of there. Put mine, just because that was right after when I had spoke. Is that all? That's it. Bill, did you have something to add?
I do. I wanna look at the minutes here quick about, so, open forum, it says, Mark Layton presented an analysis of what he believes Fergus Falls spent in twenty-three. He was using the two thousand twenty-three state auditor's report. However, the numbers he gave you for average cities, he used the population of all of Minnesota and not city populations. So, in my opinion, that, it was his analysis. But only part of that was from the state auditors. So, to be accurate.
Thank you, Bill. I think that's, uh, Sounds good, Bill. So, we have a, um, everyone good? We have a motion to approve the minutes as amended? All favor the motion say.
I would say that, under the Layton one, we should say based upon state auditor's office data, or something like that.
Based upon state auditor's expenditures.
Yeah, right.
But he used the population figures of his choosing to give an analysis.
All right.
So, what is the motion, Senator?
The motion is to amend the minutes to reflect my comments were directed at Councilmember Kramer, and also that while council, or well, Mr. Layton used numbers from the State Auditor's Office, he also added his own analysis to those numbers. I think Lynn is professional enough that she can handle it from there.
Lynn is very professional.
All favor the motion, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That motion carries. Item number six is a resolution accepting donations from Lake Region Electric Cooperative operating, Operation Roundup and the Fraternal Order of Eagles two-three-three-nine towards the purchase of an inflatable ice-cold water rescue boat for the fire department and approve corresponding budget adjustments.
Yeah. And, and the, uh, the reason I pulled that was that in the memorandum, it says six hundred dollars. And then, obviously, there was a letter from Lake Region that says five hundred dollars. Um, and, and then I wasn't sure, and then there was a second letter from Lake Region Electric Co-op, which obviously didn't have a dollar amount on it. And I just wanted to make sure that i- is it five hundred dollars or is it six hundred dollars that we're receiving?
We'll ask Chief Maccaw. Could you?
Yep.
Clarify for us, Chief? This is going in the minutes, by the way, remember.
I would love, love to. A member of the council, um, that, those were the last three years from Operation Roundup. It did get kinda confusing when I submitted it to Lynn. I'm like, well, probably didn't need that historical perspective.
Yep.
But it was, they had, they, uh, in two thousand twenty-two, I believe it was, they donated four hundred or five hundred dollars. Last year for two thousand twenty-three was, uh, five hundred, and then this year was six hundred. So,
Right.
Very nice that incrementally, um, gave us, or donated to us, uh, more than previous years. Uh, rather confusing, but that was the, the impetus behind having three different letters in there.
Yeah, I just didn't want the fire department to miss out on a hundred dollars. I wanna make sure.
So, it is six hundred from Operation Roundup and, uh, two thousand from, uh, the Eagles that would go towards that, that purchase. And then, uh, we had that a thousand, that thousand dollars from the VFW last fall. So, they fully, we've, we have a rescue boat fully funded, which is very exciting.
Thanks, Chief. We need a resolution.
I would make the resolution.
Thanks, Anthony. Second. Thanks, Tom. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions tonight, we have first reading of ordinance fifty-two eighth series, adding city code section ninety-one-point-five-three, dealing with temporary grazing for vegetate management. We just need someone to introduce that this evening. Scott?
I'll introduce that.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Anthony.
Okay, thanks. Um, I wondered if it's possible to go through and, like, clean up some language in that we mo, we use multiple variations, um, of like, least ten days, ten written in words, and then, uh, ten and obviously brackets. Um, and then, yeah, that's kind of, and I can give this to somebody. It's, that was in, uh, four F. Then, in, uh, nine B, um, we then say ten and ten feet apart, but, um, it, talking about the warning signs, it says no more than ten feet apart. Is that, does that seem excessive to have a sign every ten feet? Um, it, it means a sign has to be every nine feet, to be no more than ten feet. And in that same paragraph, it, it then says seven, seven calendar days, um, from the date that the goats were already moved. Um, and then, there was a part where it's in ten, it says a sign must notify the public. Um, and then later on, it obviously describes that the sign has to come through the city codes. But there's a number of places then in, like, C one, where it says fifteen business days, but before, we referred to calendar days. And there's somewhere, it just says fourteen days, um, of mailing. And I think we should sort of like, somewhat be, try to be consistent. And then, within ten days of mailing. And, you know, there's one or two things like that. And then, down at number seven, it also says, uh, contract permits can be revoked by city staff. But, um, I would say that the contractor is, all this is written towards a public works director, being the, kind of the, the authority. So, I wonder if it should say public works director or is designee, and, as opposed to just city staff? Because technically, anybody in city staff could just revoke the license. So, I think it should be more specific. That was kind of it. So.
Are you sure?
Yep, I'm sure. So, I, I can give this to Clara or somebody. And if she can't read my scratchings, then I'll help her.
So, that has been introduced this evening. And we'll make sure to get Clara those suggestions. Item number two is a resolution approving a one-year extension to the Pebble Lake Golf Course Management Lease Agreement. We had a good overview of that at our work session at four o'clock. But, um, Bill, did you wanna give a little, for the public's sake, an overview?
Yeah, so just a little review. So, we're talking about the existing, uh, lease agreement with Pebble Lake Golf Club, and a one-year extension for the year two thousand twenty-four. Um, council members Hicks, Kwame, Andrew, myself, and Guy Taylor, we met with members of the golf board to look through the lease agreement, as well as other things that came before the, um, the work session. But in regards to the lease agreement, in substance, it is all the same. We just changed the dates to be two thousand twenty-four. And then, section four and five of the existing lease agreement, we combined into just section four. And the intention and the substance is still the same, just trying to clean it up a little bit. In essence, what it is, is the golf board is responsible for the first five thousand dollars of capital maintenance at the course. Um, we have money in the budget, um, you know, forty thousand total, about twenty-one thousand dollars available to be used out there. They can, um, you know, work with Guy Taylor, um, under his approval, use those funds during the year. Anything that would come up over and above that would have to come back to the city council for your approval, because it wouldn't be in the budget. We're not anticipating that at this time, but that's what's in that lease agreement and the process. So, that's really what we changed. So, looking for your recommendation to approve that for one year. And then, the group will come back and, um, with further discussion with the council later about, you know, the future of the golf course.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And long-term intentions.
Thank you, Bill. Would someone like to offer that resolution?
Unmake that resolution, Your Honor.
Thanks, Anthony. Scott, second. Thank you. Discussion? Questions? Scott?
Bill, you mentioned that we've got a forty thousand dollar budget. That's for the two thousand twenty-four budget.
Correct.
And you mentioned that we have twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand dollars available. So, how do we make the numbers add up? There's a rollover.
Sounds good. Yeah, and we do have rollover with that as well. So, we budget about forty-three thousand in the two thousand twenty-four budget. So, if you go to the parking wreck area, go to Pebble Lake, or go to Golf Course, you will find about forty-three thousand dollars. There's a little bit in there for wages, so I think like two thousand dollars. If our public work staff needs to go out there, work on the building, or do something, they charge their time to that. Um, we pay for the property insurance, because the city owns most of the buildings out there. There are buildings that are owned by Pebble Lake Golf Course. They insure them themselves. So, city insurance is in there, as well as, um, a prior piece of equipment. I think it, was it the tool cat? Is that the most recent that we're making payments on?
Yes.
We're making payments within the city. So, the city's equipment fund loaned the general fund the money to buy this tool cat, and then annually, about eleven thousand dollars, I think, is being paid back between funds. So, Fund one oh one, the general fund, paying annually back to that equipment fund, um, those annual payments. So, when you start pulling those dollars off that forty-three, then you're down to about twenty-one thousand dollars. We may have about a nineteen thousand dollar carryover from unspent dollars from twenty-three. We're gonna start preparing for our audit shortly. They come in in March. So, once I reconcile the accounts, then we'll determine what carryforwards would be. We bring that back to you as a city council, too, to get your approval to carry those dollars forward. But, so, thanks for pointing that out, so that, um, you hear forty-three one and, but only twenty-one. That's why. Some of it's already spoken for.
Any other questions for Bill? There's a resolution on the floor. Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Uh, item number three is a resolution directing staff to prepare and submit an EDA grant application for the Union Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project. And I will call on City Administrator Andrew Bremse.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Councilmembers, uh, just wanna gauge your interest this evening on a potential, uh, funding opportunity. So, the federal EDA, which is the Economic Development Administration, uh, the rep for our region has been reaching out to city staff, uh, wanting to talk about, uh, the potential for a project in Fergus Falls. Um, the way these EDA grants work is they start at a fifty percent match, so it's fifty-fifty, one-to-one, um, funding for projects. And then, in some cases, you can go up from there, but the, the floor is fifty percent. Because we are a coal-impacted community, we actually can stack some of the incentives and get up to eighty percent of a project funded, um, with a very competitive application. So, we've been talking with our rep who, um, indicated they wanna get some money out in this part of the country, and certainly in coal-impacted communities. While the funding is there, that may change with the election in November. Um, and as part of the coal-impacted communities, we figured we better at least have a discussion with the council to see if they want to, uh, explore this opportunity. So, we've been brainstorming over the last handful of weeks with our, uh, federal rep, and, um, have come up with the rehabilitation of the Union Avenue Bridge project. We've discussed a number of projects that are kind of down the road or in the hopper to see what would be a good fit, based on his experience and what he thinks could ultimately be funded. And this is the project that he got most excited about. Um, just for everybody's reference, the Union Avenue Bridge is just north of Lincoln Avenue. Um, it has, it's a historic bridge that's currently under weight restrictions because of the condition of the bridge. Um, we have determined that rehabilitation, rather than replacement, is feasible and preferred, especially from a cost perspective. And, um, because that bridge has some sort of, or has weight restrictions to it and is in need of some repair, um, we've had, we, we can make the argument from an economic development perspective that it can impact commerce and routes of commerce on our busy roads, um, from our industrial parks to the interstate, certainly from a public safety perspective, as our ladder truck, our biggest fire trucks are not allowed to cross Union Avenue Bridge at this point in time. Um, there's all sorts of things that we can do to create a good narrative around why this is important for our businesses and certainly our major industries in the community. So, um, rather than carry on and on about that, I just wanna feel out the council. Um, we do not currently have identified the twenty to fifty percent match. Um, assuming, you know, we are funded at a fifty percent or an eighty percent level, we have to come up with the balance of that. Um, and we are currently in conversations or doing some research with MnDOT about potential funding matches that they may have as part of the last legislative session for some of these federal dollars. So, um, trying to close the loop on that. But, um, ultimately, and I, I realized in the middle of the night over the weekend that I failed to include this in the memo, but the rehabilitation cost project, or the project cost, is about three-point-six million. So, if we were to get fifty percent funded, that would be a one-point-eight million dollar grant. If we were to get eighty percent funding, we'd be looking at two-point-eight-eight million dollar grant. The twenty percent match, then would be seven-hundred-and-twenty thousand. Um, we will continue to explore, um, avenues for that match to try to minimize or eliminate the need for local funds. Um, so, that's what we'll do, um, as part of this work. Ultimately, I guess I wanna know if the council has the appetite to go down this road. By submitting this application, you're not obligated to take the funds or do the project. I know, um, you may wanna have more clarity on the match before you were to take that on. Um, but we do have to get the process started. The deadline is rolling, and we've been encouraged to apply sooner than later, before they start giving out money and, and, uh, those funds get drawn down. So, um, I can stand by for questions, but, uh, really, at this point, the ask is whether or not the council wants us to move forward. We will incur fairly, you know, significant staff time preparing the application, nothing too crazy. And then, uh, you know, that potential matching funds would be a, a potential budgetary impact. If we aren't able to identify those, then we move forward with the project. So, I'll stand by for questions. But that's kinda what we're looking at, is, is gauging appetite of the council today.
Thanks, Andrew. I would, um, I guess I would say that we're gonna have to fix that bridge at some point. And, uh, there's never been a better time, and there probably is not a better time than right now to apply for federal and state funding for that. So, again, it's not committing us to doing a project, but I don't know why we wouldn't go after it.
Do we need to put a motion on the floor to do it, or?
Resolution.
A resolution?
Someone offer it?
I'll offer it.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Jim. Anyone have any other comments? I know there are a bunch of state funds right now that are specifically for, to match those federal match requirements. So, all of, uh, roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thanks, Andrew and staff, for your work on that. Uh, item number four is a resolution engaging Baker Tilly for a tax increment financing analysis for a possible workforce housing project. We'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, city staff is anticipating making an application to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency for a workforce housing grant sometime this spring. The application is due at the end of April. So, this request is, um, to be able to enter into an agreement with Baker Tilly, once we have an applicant at the table, um, for, uh, TIF analysis, to, uh, come up with the match then for the MHFA grant. Um, it's a two-to-one match, so the state would provide two dollars to every one dollar that's provided by, um, the city government or the applicant. Um, so, it's a, it's probably a great use of our TIF money if we're gonna go down that road. But this does not beholden you to giving any applicant TIF. This just says that we can start the financial analysis if and when an application is on the table. We just wanna speed the process up, um, with the deadline of the grant that is looming at the end of April.
Thanks, Clara. And just a reminder that it was, um, paying for the services.
Thanks, Clara. And just a reminder that those paying for the services of Baker Tilly are the responsibility of the developer.
Correct.
And Anthony, you've been in conversations as well with the developer. Do you have anything to add? I mean.
I think it is a very tight deadline, but I can put, I'll put the resolution on the table.
Thank you, Anthony. Someone like to second? Thank you, Tom. All right, there's a resolution and a second.
I think it's a, because it is a very tight deadline, the developer is also looking at doing his own analysis on housing need out of his own pocket too. So, you know, the, the potential developer here is spending money at this point in time to see whether this is feasible to go forward. And as Clara said, you know, we don't have to give TIF at the end of the day. You know, but we do have to have the documentation in place so that we can make that decision later on. And as time is of an essence, it would be nice to get this on the, on the table.
Thanks, Anthony. Any questions or just want to give the address, I think?
Yeah, just real quickly. Clara states in the memo, but I don't think it was verbally said. But we're, the project location that we're talking about is 801 Stanton Avenue, which is the former Checkers, Archie's, you name it.
Lumber site.
I think a lot of people, that resonates differently depending on your age, but that's the site that's being looked at.
Thanks, Andrew. All right, resolution. Here's a second. Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims tonight, we have bills in the amount of $1,205,421.76. If anyone has any questions, we will direct them to our finance director. I've got a couple. Let's get a.
I will allow for the resolution. Pay the bills.
Thanks, Jim. Second, Scott. And go ahead.
Over the course of months, I've noticed that we often will have expenses for repairs or maintenance at the CBHH. And this particular month includes bills of over $4,000. And so I asked Bill if he could explain that for us.
Yeah, so that was that Community Behavioral Health Hospital. It's located out towards RDO at the Roundabout. And the Port Authority built that facility and after the services were moved out of the Regional Treatment Center, built that facility, bonded for it. The state of Minnesota makes lease payments to the city every month. They made lease payments to cover the bond payments, so the state of Minnesota covered the construction of it. And now in the lease payments, we put aside money for capital maintenance as well as the operation. So you're going to see every month different things, you know, from monthly monitoring to these repairs. And there are a lot of repairs and new security systems over the years. You know, we've updated the outside, sometimes new carpet inside. So, but it's all fully funded by the state of Minnesota.
So we get reimbursed for everything?
Correct.
That sounds good. One other area that I asked him to explain for us was, oh, on this one. At the Bigwood Events Center, a bill for $39,701 to Bloom of Minnesota.
Yeah, so from Bloom, that's the technology out there. That is done. It is complete. It's operational. This is the final bill on that technology. So just letting you know, we are open and operational and receiving business, booking out business for the future as well. So done with that, we can cross that out.
There were so many delays with the supply issues and whatnot with that technology that that dragged out for quite a long time. So it's glad to see that that's wrapped up.
Yeah, it took a long time to get the equipment actually on site, so.
The last question I had was on capital improvements, payment to Rachel Contracting for the wastewater treatment plant demolition that has apparently begun. And I wasn't aware of that. And so now we've got $155,000 going out on that and what is a 600 and something project, right?
Yep.
It's underway as of, I don't know, when did they start, Brian?
About a month ago. They're off for a few weeks. This week later.
Okay. Weather's been good for them.
Yes, it has. Got to take advantage of it.
That's it. Thanks, Scott. Anyone else have any questions for Bill or any other staff regarding the presentation of claims? Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. There are no board committee, department reports, or reports from staff or administrative officers. There is no old, unfinished, or new business that I'm aware of. Lynn, do you have any announcements that you'd like to make? So you're none? We're adjourned.